First up will be the pleasure of allegiance. I'd like to call the roll. Mr. Tuozola.
Here.
Mr. Dubois.
Here.
Ms. Ferrante.
Here.
Mr. Haberman.
Here.
Mr. Vassino.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
Ms. Eggleson. Let the record show that Robert Thomas is not present. First order of business is the election of the chairman. Is there a nomination?
I make my, I'd like to nominate Joe Tuozolo.
I second it.
There is a, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, commissioners, for again putting your trust in me to represent you. I appreciate that. Nominations for secretary. Do you have any nominations for secretary, please?
I nominate Commissioner Haberman, please.
Second. We have a nomination for Howard Haberman. And we have a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for secretary? Are there any other nominations for secretary? We have a nomination for Howard for secretary. And we have a second. All. Vote, please. What's that? Okay, right, okay. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Just a couple of, a couple of business things that we have right now I want to bring to your attention. Sarah Ferrante is, has been appointed from alternate member to regular member of the zoning board of appeals. And for the record, Allison Rose Egleton. Eggleson, I'm sorry. Eggleson. Has been appointed as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals. For our hearings tonight, is there anyone that has any conflict of interest with any board member that might be here for their hearing? Before we start the business meeting, also I'd like to mention under old business this evening, we have, and this would be to the attention of Attorney Lynch, Tanglewood Circle. We only have four board members this evening that would be able to vote on this. So you have the option to move this ahead till, to February?
Yes, thank you, Mr.
Because it'll still be within the 65-day period?
Correct. Thank you. I did get a call from the zoning staff this afternoon making me aware of the fact that of the five board members who participated in the hearing last month, only four would be here tonight. So I did make the call to my client in Florida and discussed it with her. And it would be her preference to have the matter tabled until the February meeting when hopefully all five board members who deliberated in the, the hearing could be present to vote.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris, do we have to, do we need a motion on this to table this again, or can it just be tabled?
No.
Okay. Under old business, items number one and two will be tabled till, till next month. That would be it. Mr. Haberman.
Item number one, 726 East Broadway, corner of Cooper, Zone R5, Michael Lynch, Esquire attorney for Biagio Alfonso. Owner varies sections nine dash two dash three subsection one, use to allow serving wine and beer in existing restaurant. Map 22 block 457, parcel five.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Michael Lynch, and I'm an attorney from the law offices of Lynch, Trembucky, and Boynton here in Milford. And I represent the applicant Leo Kudikas, who is seeking a use variance pursuant to section 9.2.3 subsection one of the zoning regulations. Now, by way of background, Mr. Kudikas and his wife Stephanie, who were present this evening, own and operate The Greek Spot, which is located at 726 East Broadway here in Milford. And they opened for business in July of 2013. Now, prior to this, the location served as a deli and restaurant for a number of years known as Alfonso's Deli. Tonight, it is their desire to obtain the board's approval for a use variance to allow them both the maximum and reasonable use of their business in order to solely have the ability to serve wine and beer only to the restaurant patrons. Now, due to the fact that their restaurant is a legal non-conforming use, it is important to note that this is not an expansion of that use, but merely a reasonable accommodation to better serve their business model as well as the repeated requests of the restaurant's patrons themselves. Now, The Greek Spot operates on a seasonal schedule, and it is currently closed during the winter months. Mr. Kudikas plans to reopen in April or May, depending on the weather. And The Greek Spot offers a variety of traditional Greek fare from chicken souvlaki to gyros and vegan yam burgers. Also, Mr. Kudikas and his wife are well-respected members of the East Broadway community, living themselves only a few steps away from their restaurant. Again, my client is here tonight aiming to vary section 9.2.3 subsection one of the zoning regulations. And as amended, that reads prohibited variances are any use variance that is detrimental to the community's public health, safety, and general welfare. Now, it is our contention that if granted, this use variance is wholly in line with the intent of the zoning regulations, as well as in harmony with the East Broadway community's health, safety, and general welfare. Mr. Kudikas and his wife do not intend to have a consumer bar in any way, but only the approval of the board to serve wine and beer to their customers while they enjoy their traditional Greek fare. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch? So this is no way has anything to do with any kind of cafe permit or anything like that? It's just, just straight out serving beer and wine?
Mr. Chairman, not at all. Per the Department of Consumer Protection for the state of Connecticut, they would be making an application if approved under a restaurant wine and beer only, not even intoxicating spirits or liquors. My clients have informed me that they merely wish to have a couple of bottles of wine and a couple of beers to be able to serve their customers. That's solely the accommodation that their patrons are asking of them and why I'm here tonight on their behalf.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions for Mr. Lynch? Is there anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed? Would you like to speak, sir? Are you in favor?
Would you like to speak? This is Mr. Kudikas, Mr. Chairman. Okay.
Okay, sorry. He's not going to speak then?
No.
All right. Is there anyone here opposed to this application? If you're opposed, you can come forward, please. Please identify yourself and your, and your address and...
Good evening. My name is Michael Calibro. I reside at 723 East Broadway, directly across from The Greek Spot Cafe. I've lived at this address on and off for 54 years since my parents purchased the house in 1961. I am the current owner. Over the years, the use of the building at 726 East Broadway has varied from a small one-story storefront to a two-story building with three apartments and a storefront. In the 60s, it was a small convenience-type store. Then a pool table was added, and it became a clubhouse for a motorcycle club. In the 70s, it became a popular breakfast diner. In the 90s, it was a deli. During these years, all the business activities were confined to the inside of the building. Now, the current use is a cafe where the majority of the patrons sit outside at tables in an area from the front of the building to the edge of the public sidewalk, running the full length of the building on East Broadway to the corner of Cooper Avenue. This area, I do not believe, is zoned for outdoor seating. Anyone will be able to walk in, buy a beer or a glass of wine, then stand or sit right next to a public sidewalk. People will walk across the street, sit on the beach, or walk along the water with a beer or a glass of wine in their hand, just as they do now with their coffee. This will lead to an increased notion or even acceptance that you can drink on the beach in this area because they are selling it across the street. 100 yards away is Silver Sands State Park, where no alcohol-allowed signs are posted throughout the park and the parking lots. Diagonally across the street from The Greek Spot is an open area maintained by the city of Milford as a local beach for area restaurants. There was a sign posted by the city of Milford stating no alcoholic beverages. But this application seeks to allow beer and wine to be served right across the street. There is a reason for alcohol not being allowed throughout the beach area. It is a known party spot where many people come to drink and party. Why would anybody allow easy access to alcohol in this area? We have trouble with excessive drinking and partying in this area all the time, even with an increased police presence. This area and the sidewalk in front of the cafe, where many people with children pass on their way to the state park, is no place to be serving alcohol of any type. I didn't get into the lack of parking for local residents who pay very high taxes to live here and can't find a place to park, or the continuous music being played outside all day into the night to accommodate the outdoor seating area. Blue painted concrete blocks lined up on the median of a state road put there by The Greek Spot to try and indicate that this is their assigned parking area, and local residents should not park there. In conclusion, this is a closely populated residential area and should not be the place to serve beer, wine, or any alcohol. I would hope that you agree that this is not the downtown area, but a residential neighborhood, and deny this variance. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in opposition?
My name is Lehman K. Lee. I live in the 718 East Broadway, and then a couple buildings next to the restaurant. I'm representing my property, investment property, is 720 right next to my current residence. And also, my nephews, they have a house down on the beach at 691 East Broadway. Since in 1935, okay, I invested in Milford and planning to retire in this nice area. So, and because of the area is so attractive, and that's why I throw all my lifetime saving into this properties around in Milford Beach here. And I've been living there for over 30 years. And you see, this area is nice and growing, and especially recently, there's more family to come in, have the childrens running around on the street. That's very nice. And my wife and I both retire, and we've been watching the kids going on the school bus and getting off the school bus. And they're all riding bikes around the area, and this is a safe area. And I think the restaurant has been here since even before I moved in here. I understand that when I moved in there and bought the property right next to the restaurant, they were operated by a retired Sikorsky fireman. They operating a cafe there and just have a breakfast and some food servicing. I think that was very nice for them to take care of the area. But when we're talking about getting into wine and beer, and we do have every summer, have to put up with all these college kid parties. And they spend many, many kicks of beer down in the, down on the beach. And in the morning, and in the Monday morning, and we got to wind up with empty big cans and, and cups all over the street. Now, this is, the town's business is not my business. But when I live right next to the store that is serving wine and beer and, and a nice neighborhood that we've been having here, and I don't think that we should be able to allow. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else is opposed, please?
My name is Susanna Lee. I live in 716 East Broadway, and we own the property 720 next door to that cafe. And when there are so many cooking over there, and the smell is so bad, my tenant cannot open the window. Even I'm in 716, and I can smell the cooking. And we can't even open the window, the grease and everything. But the parking is terrible. My tenants, when they come home, there's no place to park. So that is the problem with the residential area. So, and I hope that you won't approve, so I'm against it.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Come forward, please.
My name is Barbara Whitcomb. I'm a homeowner at 741 East Broadway, and I oppose granting the variance for 726 East Broadway. The Greek Spot is a restaurant located in a neighborhood that is zoned for single-family homes. It exists because it's been grandfathered in from many years ago. I believe that granting the variance will create problems for the neighborhood. There will be more traffic and pedestrians in an already very busy intersection. Problems of parking for the residents is just going to increase, and it's a nightmare in the summer. The owners may decide to extend their hours later into the evening, and now there's going to be possibly a noise problem. The people at closing time may decide to go across to the beach, the open beach across the street. There are homes on each side of that beach. One of those homes, there are small children. Some of these, many of these problems then could become problems for the town because the residents will feel the need to ask for help in resolving issues. So I, I hope you won't grant the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Please not, try not to be repetitive of anything else that was said, please.
I'll be quick. I'm Michael Mecca. I reside at 749 East Broadway. I just want to read from the state statute 8.6 with regards to variances. I'm sure you guys are well aware of this. "A peculiar or unique feature of a particular piece of property that prevents the landowner from making a reasonable use of property in conformance with the existing zoning regulation. A hardship has nothing to do with the personal circumstance of the landowner. The fact that the owner may be able to make a more profitable use of the land if not for zoning regulations does not equate a hardship." It's my understanding that, I don't question their intent about what they want to do, but it's my understanding that if the zoning was approved, it would stay with the property. So 10 years from now, when someone else decides to open, they may have a different intent. The existing, I bought a house in an existing zone, in an existing residential zone, not a mixed-use zone. This potentially threatens public safety. It threatens property values. And a restaurant that serves beer and wine is clearly not in the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed?
Can I just approach the bench to pass out pictures that you guys can reference, please?
Yeah, bring it to me, please. And what are they?
Interview referencing? Oh, there's eight different ones, so you can pass.
Go ahead. Identify yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Rob Versalone. I reside at 715 East Broadway. It's diagonally across from The Greek Spot. I am strongly against the variance being granted. First of all, I'm not hearing a valid hardship. There are reasons for zoning laws. I specifically purchased and built my house in a residential area, not a business one. Nobody expects a bar to be opened up across the street from them in a residential area. This will set precedence for future businesses in that location to sell alcohol, and we don't know what is coming next. This variance will cause our property values to decline. The Greek Spot owners rented a space from the previous renter owners. The previous restaurant was established as a mom-and-pop community place in a residential area. It did not have an alcohol permit. I'm going to outline significant safety concerns and welfare of the neighborhood concerns. Safety number one, location. The Greek Spot is steps away to a public passway leading directly across to the beach. See picture number one. Like I said, they're numbered on the back. According to the Milford zoning regulations, 5.5.1.2, restriction of permit location. Except where specifically exempted by these regulations, no establishment selling or serving alcohol liquor shall be located on any lot with a distance of 300 feet between the nearest lot lines of any public park or playground. The Greek Spot is approximately 120 feet from the lots that the city maintains for public use. See picture number 2A. The city also put a sign containing no alcoholic beverages on this property. The state park is also approximately 206 steps away. The Greek Spot advertises that they are steps away from the state park. See picture 2B. The state park does not allow alcohol. I want to highlight that the sandbar goes out to Charles Island. It presents inherent danger without an easy access to alcohol. Safety number two, proximity to the street and bus stop. They have several tables placed outside. I'm concerned with people drinking right next to a sidewalk and in such close proximity to the street. See picture number three and four. I also want to point out that this is a neighborhood bus stop where our children are picked up and other children are dropped off each day. Safety number three, crosswalks. You would have to bypass several crosswalks on East Broadway in entering and leaving the neighborhood, to and from The Greek Spot. We already have to deal with telling people to slow down constantly due to the speeding. The visibility is limited due to cars parked in the street and people stepping out in between them. This is challenging enough without alcohol as a factor. Welfare of our neighborhood, trespassing. Our houses are in very close proximity to The Greek Spot. We are constantly dealing with trespassing in our neighborhood. I've had to tell people who are trying to eat on my property to please leave. So now I'm concerned that I would have to deal with people who are intoxicated trespassing. Parking. There's not enough onsite parking to support the restaurant as it is. With three apartments in the building plus The Greek Spot, people are parking in the street. With limited onsite parking spots, The Greek Spot took it upon themselves to put blue cinder blocks in the median of a state road to mark parking spots. See picture number five. The residents pay high taxes with many times no place to park. In closing, we have successfully been trying to clean up our neighborhood due to the intoxicated people causing public disturbance, including DJs, urination, litter, noise, and using profanity. The police are down here constantly. This neighborhood has been through enough with Sandy and Irene. Please decline this for the safety concerns and the welfare of our neighborhood concerns. Thank you. My wife here would just like to say a couple of words.
Hi. My name's Tara Versalone, and I reside with Rob at 715 East Broadway, as he said, diagonally across the street from The Greek Spot. And as a mom, I'm adamantly against this, them obtaining a variance for serving alcohol in their cafe. It's our residential area. I have lived in Fairfield Beach Road in Fairfield, and I've seen firsthand what the Seagrape Cafe has done to that community. When my husband and I purchased our home in this beautiful coastal residential area, we had dreams of raising our children in a quiet, safe environment. Now, as a mother of two young children, who you see here tonight, who attends school in our community, I beg you to deny this request. I bring your attention to picture number six in your packet. And as you can see, this picture was taken through the headboard of our four-year-old son's bed. You can clearly see how close he sleeps to The Greek Spot. He is a young boy who attends Orange Avenue Preschool, a special, special integrated preschool program. He works hard each day and receives speech therapy services each day as part of his program there. It is imperative that he be rested so that he can make his strides that he deserves to make as a resident of our community. His school year also doesn't end in June. He receives extended school year services throughout the summer as well. As we know, with the consumption of alcohol, music gets louder, voices get louder, and nights get later. My husband talked about the bus stop. That's another huge concern of mine, that people would be drinking at the time of them being dropped off. Please vote no for this request, and please vote yes for the development of your youngest community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Lynch? Give me rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we've all just heard testimony from numerous neighbors in the community. And to clarify a point, to bring home what exactly my client and his wife would like to do here, there would not be a consumer bar. This would not be the Seagrape. This would not be a cafe liquor permit. This is solely an accommodation to better serve the customers who come in and actually ask to have a glass of wine with their moussaka or a beer with their chicken souvlaki. We've also heard testimony that parking could be an issue, that there will be increased traffic. Again, I want to stress that this is a legal, non-conforming use as it is, as it stands as a restaurant. And again, this is an accommodation, and there is no such thing as an economic hardship. My clients aren't here today to say, you know, the bills will be higher if they're able to pour wine as opposed to handing out a soda. Quite contrary, my clients want to class the restaurant up a bit. Right now, they serve Diet Coke and Sprite in plastic cups, whereas if they had the opportunity for a patron to come in, and as they have requested in the past, to be able to have a glass of wine with their meal, that is solely what they're looking for. They're solely going for a restaurant wine and beer only permit. I also would like to stress that Connecticut state liquor laws forbid anyone from leaving any establishment, whether it be on the beach or in downtown Milford, from leaving that restaurant or cafe with any alcoholic drink in their hand. So we've heard that there are state parks. There's a fear that there are neighbors with kegs, I believe, one individual testified to. That, that's outside of the scope of what we're looking to do here. And my clients are adamant that this will be beneficial. It'll better, better serve their business model. Again, I'd also like to stress the hours of operation. Pursuant to their lease agreement, they can only operate from 9:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Now, a big contention here was that if granted, a liquor license would allow individuals to sit outside, potentially imbibe and become intoxicated. I'm hard pressed to believe that at 8:00 p.m., if Mr. Kudikas shuts the light off, that that would be an issue. But I did want to note that to the members of the board. Again, they're seasonally operated. They're currently closed. They open in April until October. You know, this is a success story of a husband and wife who themselves have two young children, a three-year-old and a four-year-old, who live right down the street. And they opened this business in the wake of Hurricane Sandy. They spent three months fitting it up. And again, this, the reason that we're here tonight is because their own restaurant patrons asked them to have the ability to be able to have a sole glass of wine or a beer. There's no intoxicating spirits. There's no consumer bar. And again, to stress, the driving home point is that you would not be able to bring any liquor off the premises. Again, that's state law. The Department of Consumer Protection regulates that area. And I have nothing further.
Can you tell me how many seats? We have a picture here. How many seats they have out front during the summer? How many tables? And again, you-
Would you like? This is Leo Kudokas.
I can't take anything from him right now. I'm asking you. You have to sit, sir. I'm sorry. We asked you before.
I believe in pictures that I've seen online on the Connecticut Post-Road article, there were about 10, and it's an enclosed porch area. I know there was testimony that you would have an alcoholic beverage next to a street. Again, there's an overhang, and there's actually, I believe they have some vegetation that actually cordons off and creates an area where it's essentially enclosed.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? Mr. Vasino, you have any questions for Mr. Lynch?
What's the hardship, Mr. Lynch?
The hardship here, again, and I'm not saying that there is no such thing as an economic hardship. The hardship here is allowing the maximum and reasonable use of their property, of their investment, of their business. And with that said, this is coming at the request of their own patrons who ask to be able to have a glass of wine or a beer with their meal.
But wouldn't you say that just as many people that are asking to have a glass of wine or a beer at the establishment, there might be just as many people that are opposed to that situation?
That could be interpreted in that way.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Sodha.
I have a question for you. What would, what steps would you have in place for like, say, four people come in at 3:00 in the afternoon and sit down and just start ordering drinks, and they're not ordering meals?
Well, you would actually-
And they're sitting there till 8:00.
That's a good question. That would actually have to come from the applicant and his wife, and their members who work at the restaurant themselves. Again, under state law, you can't serve liquor. Again, it would be no one going in and picking out a glass of wine or a beer to serve. They have to be served. You have to be at least 18 years old in the state of Connecticut to be able to serve alcohol. That being said, it comes under the discretion, and you can't over-serve. You can't serve someone who's intoxicated, so he would actually reserve the right, or she would reserve the right, to ask those patrons to leave. So although there's no consumer bar, I understand the question, if a group, a hypothetical, if a group of people sat down and just wanted to drink, that would have to come from the actual owners themselves to go up and say that they can no longer be there, or they would have to have food.
Go ahead, Mr. Sodha.
Now, sometimes I've seen some restaurants, they have it, you can bring your own in to drink. Is there some type of permit like that?
Yes, there is no permit like that, and we're a city building, so the restaurant right across the street has that, and I believe another one in Milford. The problem with that is that there's no, the state regulates that area. And my client would actually, he wants to operate wholly within the confines of state law and state statute. So there is no, I'll call it the BYOB statute or liquor license. That doesn't exist. He'd actually be, anyone who operates in that is not within the state regulations. So that's why, again, this would be, he's petitioning for approval for a restaurant wine and beer only. And I say that wine and beer only because there's a restaurant liquor, which the difference there is you could have a fully encased bar, again, with spirits, intoxicating liquors. And again, to stress, my client said that they solely would only like to have about two or three different bottles of wine and a couple beers. That's solely it. And again, I know that testimony was given where there's a big fear that people would be crossing, traversing with alcohol outside of the restaurant. Again, that is regulated by the state, and that's something that would be disallowed by the owners.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Vasino.
How many times have, I guess, I guess my first question would be, if there was a problem with a disturbance, do you guys have security at that? How do you handle, how do you plan on handling that? Have you had problems there before, even before the alcohol? Can you give me an insight into some of that?
Sure. Again, pursuant to the lease agreement with the owners of the building, the Biagios, I believe it's a Biagio Alfonso, the operating hours are from 9:00 AM until 8:00 PM. So there haven't been any issues where intoxicated, that I've been told from my clients, that intoxicated individuals have come off the beach. Again, and this isn't, you know, a sleepy little shack. This is actually a very nice restaurant that has operated for a little, almost two full summers now. They're approaching their third summer. And my clients would have to pick up the phone and call the Milford Police, just as any other business owner, if people were having liquor and if they seemed intoxicated, the first thing they would have to do is ask them to leave. If there was a disruption there, then they would have to call the Milford Police. Again, with the hours of operation from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and again, alcoholic liquor cannot be served prior to 11:00 AM on Sundays. And again, the state liquor hours are longer, but there is a lease agreement in place here which restricts the hours of operation. And he's within, they are, excuse me, within that operation timeframe.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Okay, this hearing is closed.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts?
Well, for me, it pretty much lies with the people who live in that community. Before I would want to approve some kind of use change like that, I would hope that the community, the residents who are going to have to live with it, would embrace it, want it. There had been nobody presented here who came up and spoke in favor of this. So I feel residency, residents about voting for this. I'm really concerned about doing that.
I tend to agree. I mean, that's why I asked the question before. Just as many people that they say came to the bar and asked for this enhancement, we didn't see any of them come here today. We did hear a lot of people within the neighborhood that will have to live with the consequences of this, whichever way we vote, present and voiced a strong opinion.
Don't get me wrong, I run down there, and I go by this place, and I wouldn't mind stopping in and having something to eat and having a beer, but, you know, I don't live there, and I wouldn't want to impose that on a community and a group of residents that, you know, don't want it.
Tara.
I agree. I think it does come down to the residents as well. Like Howard said, we haven't heard anyone in the community speak in favor of it, and I myself enjoy the Greek Spot, and it's always nice to enjoy a glass of wine with your meal, but I get to go home, and I don't have to live with what might be happening in the community. And none of us see it firsthand, but the community has spoken here tonight in opposition.
Any other comments?
In terms of hardship, there really isn't a hardship. This is a convenience more than a hardship. So it's kind of hard to argue for a hardship here.
There's absolutely no hardship.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny, reason for denial, that there really isn't a hardship shown. And the community residents are in favor of it.
I second.
We have a motion to deny, and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sodha?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
I'm with the motion.
I'm with the motions. Deny.
Item number two, 753 East Broadway, Zone R5, Ronald D. Arillo, architect for Carmen Stefano, owner, vary section 3-1-4-1. Front yard setback to 5.5 feet where 10 feet required. To four stories where three stories permitted. 4.1.4 North Eve to 4.4 feet where 8 feet permitted. West Eve to 2.6 feet where 8 feet permitted. Front stairs to 0.5 feet where 8 feet permitted. To build addition to a legal two-family dwelling, map 22, block 474, parcel 24.
My name's Ron Duraleo. I'm the architect. My address is 42 Cherry Street, Milford, Connecticut. We're asking for the ZBA to approve the variances that were just read. Our hardship is that this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It currently is a legal two-family residence. And previously, this board has approved the enlargement of the non-conforming legal use. We also received an approval to add a three-story deck with a five-foot side yard setback where 8 feet was allowed. The current cumulative cost of the previous improvements to the property is at 42.2% of the market value of the structure. This includes some storm repairs. So anything we do to this house basically is going to send us above the 50% threshold, which will create a need for us to lift the house to the current AE13 flood height. And that's per the city flood regulations and the state building code. So we only have 7.8% of the value of the home to work with before we have to elevate the house. The current grade, the average grade of the building area is at 6.9 feet. The current finished floor height is at 11.1. If we raise the structure to elevation AE13, plus add the one-foot freeboard, which is called out for in the building code, the bottom of our structure will be at elevation 14. That creates a situation where the grade is at 6.9, I'll call it 7, and the bottom of our structure is at 14. So that's seven feet. It no longer qualifies as a crawl space. And it makes sense to park under there because we're up at seven feet. So in the design that I'm proposing, I just raised it a little more so I could get an overhead door and a operating motor to lift the door. And the proposed elevation is at 16 feet. We will be able to get two parking spaces on the lot. Currently, there is no parking on the site. The lower level, or the garage storage area, will be built to flood standards. It will have five flood vents, plus an overhead door in the front and the back, which will allow water to flow freely through the house in the event of a flood. The top floor of the design actually fits the definition of a habitable attic according to the state building code. We are proposing not only to elevate the house, but to also push it back four feet to allow for the new front stairs. Now that we have to go up seven feet, or actually to the floor level, eight feet, we need more room to put us in the stairs. This is something that needs to happen to push the house back because the front property, the current house sits so close to the front property line. In fact, the existing stairs are over the front property line. The house will be pushed to the side slightly, just maybe about a foot, so that we can move the westerly wall away from the property line and keep that wall three feet away from the property line. That will allow us to comply with the building code for fire rating and allowable class area. We also have kept the opposite side of the house out of the five-foot side yard setback. In the process of raising the house, we are also going to align and straighten the house on the property so it runs parallel with the property line. The current eve on the west is at 1.7 feet from the side yard property line. By pushing the house over, the eve will now be 2.6 feet from the property line. On the east side, the eve is now 5.6 feet from the property line, and with our proposal, it will now be five feet from the property line. So it will stay out of that five-foot side yard. The proposed eves all around the house have a 10-inch projection from the house wall. One of the goals of the structure and the design was to keep it out of the VE13 flood zone, the area of high-velocity wave action. So that kind of created a need for us to be near the road and not push it way back. And we also want to stay 50 feet away from the Thai line and behind the coastal jurisdiction line, CJL line, which is the highest predicted tidal line as calculated by the state DEEP. Inside the house, Unit 1 and Unit 2 will remain where they currently are within the structure. After the lift, Unit 1 will end up on Level 2. Unit 2 will end up on Level 3 and 4. There is currently some space in the attic that has sheet rock, but it's very low. It's an attic. The garage will be at Level 1, obviously. As previously stated, this board in the past has already approved the enlargement of a legal, non-conforming structure. So what that means is we will enlarge what's now the current attic level to give more living space. And there's currently a front, enclosed front porch on the property. We're going to build straight up over that. If you look at the cross-section on drawing A2, I'll give you some time to look at that. You will see that by adding the Gambrel-style roof, Mansard-Gambrel-style roof, we are only slightly over three feet higher than if we simply just raised the existing house and kept the existing gable attic roof. The reason we're so high is because of the flood plain. We are not increasing the current lot coverage at all. That remains at 40%, where the maximum allowed is 65%. Our building area is going up slightly to 38%, but it remains below the maximum allowed of 45%. On the rear of the deck, we will be using a six-foot diameter spiral stair to get to grade, and that will reduce the bulk of the construction if we had a straight-run stair. And it also reduces the obstruction in the flood plain. The area below the decks will be a patio made of concrete pavers. This will allow the water to drain through. Looking at the panorama photos that I prepared, you can see the house in the context of the neighborhood. Many of the nearby houses are four levels. And the smaller house that's right next door to the right from the street, you can actually see a "For Sale" sign right in front of it. So that house will be sold soon, probably, I would guess, will be renovated and raised sooner or later. We went with the Mansard-style roof for a couple of reasons. This will help because of the slope back of the roof. It slopes two times. It will avoid a cavernous feeling along the road, which is starting to be created by the adjacent houses. It will soften the height of the structure. The roof sloping back should allow a little more sunlight to come down to the road. The dormers in the design will add windows and light to the top floor. And also, it allows us to bring the interior walls back, and the living space in the interior walls will remain of a five-foot side yard setback. That's all I have.
Mr. Harris, four stories. We're in the process of, or is there a process of changing some rulings on three stories versus four stories? And we're looking at the overall height of the structure now?
The Planning and Zoning Board is reviewing the height regulations. But presently, we still have three stories and a 35-foot. We still have both currently. We expect that to change, though.
The other thing, too, is stating that this is a two-family house? Is this a legal two-family house?
This is a legal two-family house with a prior variance to expand it.
And the question we always ask is, what is the height on this house? I think you already stated it's under 35 feet.
Yes, it's about, if I remember, it's on the drawing, on the cross-section. but it's about 34 and a half feet. And if it looks, we'll have a surveyor while it's being built. If it looks like we're getting close, we'll reduce the roof pitch, and I'll reduce the ceiling height up on the top floor. Make sure we stay below 35 feet.
Any questions for this gentleman? Mr. Sota?
I have one for Mr. Harris. I thought there was a thing on the, the attic could not exceed 50 percent of the floor below it if you had a walk-up attic. Is that?
Are you referring to the definition of attic in the zoning regulations?
Well, I thought if you had a walk-up attic, it couldn't exceed 50 percent of the floor below it.
They have a prior variance to expand this building, so the attic is functionally going away.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Please come forward.
Hi, Damian Pasquale, 750 80s Broadway. I came in to review the plans. I live directly across the street from the house. It looks like a very beautiful home that they plan to build. I do have one concern, and I looked at the plans and I didn't see it noted. I'm here 28 years, and our walkway from Chetwood Street goes through that property. And over the years, it seems to have gotten smaller and smaller. So I did look on the plans. There is something circled about, I don't know if it's called an easement or a pass-through, but I just want to make sure that it's noted that that stays, certainly doesn't get any smaller than it's gotten. It's one of the smallest pass-throughs of every one of the streets that are accessed onto the beach. Otherwise, I think the house looks beautiful and it'll be a nice benefit to the neighborhood. Thank you.
So you're in favor, but that's your only concern?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it just, you know, it was, I didn't really see it noted on the plan. I saw a circle with a note of it, but not specifically drawn in on a blueprint that there isn't a walkway through there that has been being used for my 28 years.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? No? Gentlemen, are we all set? Okay. Okay, this hearing is closed. Go ahead, Mr. Haberman, you look like you're ready to...
Well, I think, I don't really have a problem with it. They made some nice changes to it to reduce some of the existing nonconformities. It's a two-family, and we've been very around that, and we've always been approved to be expanded on. So, you know, I do appreciate the off-street parking that's going to be provided and the changes that reduce the existing nonconformities.
If you look at the pictures that have been submitted to us, the houses down the other side of it are quite larger, so it does fit in. So I think the planning looks good on it.
My biggest concerns with these houses getting rebuilt is generally the height and the lot coverage, but both of those seem to be accounted for. The lot coverage won't be increasing, and the height is still under regulation.
Any other discussion? If not, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Reason for the approval is pre-existing nonconforming lot. However, they have reduced some of the nonconformities, and I would like to accept the plans presented today on the survey from Cabez de Angeles.
We motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Vazino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion.
It's approved.
Item number 3, 33 Melba Street, Zone R5. Dave Salerno, agent for O M P D, owner. Vary section 3-1-4-1, front yard to four feet where 10 feet required. 4.1, 4. Front eve to three foot where eight feet permitted to build second-story addition, map 29, block 587, parcel 11.
Go ahead. Did, when I went by this house, I didn't see a placard up. I went by on February 4th. I was just wondering if other commissioners saw one?
Yeah, I saw one today.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We're just going to take a, just a five-minute break, a technical break for...
Yeah, no problem.
We have an engineer that's, they're recording this program?
Sure, no problem. It's okay to borrow the easel, mine just snapped. Did I just set that up while you guys were doing the break?
So yes. So we're in five minutes recess.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're back. We're going to resume this meeting. This was 33 Melba Street. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name is Dave Salerno, and I'm from Compass Builders. And I'm here to present for O M D P. It's the Jago family who's over here on the left side, and it's building for a new house over at 33 Melba Street. The house is located presently in an R5 zone, and it is an approved nonconforming building lot with the home presently on it. There's a couple of hardships on the lot. The first one, the zone requires square footage of 5,000 square feet, and they only have 4,200. And the second one is the zone requires 50-foot width in the front, and I'm saying the lot, and the lot only has 30-foot presently. So since it doesn't conform on the lot right now, we have, both sides are not conforming. On one side, it's 3.6 feet to the property line, and on the other side, it is six feet to the property line. So what we are proposing to do is knock the house down and build a new home. The new house will conform in front and rear setbacks. And after consulting with the zoning officer, we made the right side of the house conform at the five-foot setback, and the left side will only need a variance. That's the only one, instead of the 10 feet to the property line, we will have four feet to the property line. In designing the plan, we wanted to consider a few things, especially since the house is located in the VE zone. We did not want to go any closer to the ocean to block anybody's view. We were actually a foot farther away, and this will allow us to give a little more protection from any type of storms. We also did not want to build a massive structure. The house will blend in nicely with the street. It will be only approximately 2,500 square feet. We did not want to go any wider than the existing structure. The plan actually is slightly less than what is on the house presently. We are also building a garage underneath to make sure that we raise the house above the VE zone standards. Our goal is to be four feet above the standards to maximize storm protection and to achieve the best insurance rate possible for the Jagos. We wanted, also want a structure that blends in architecturally with the other houses on the street. And you could see here the front view of the house. It's your typical house down on Melba Street, no different than anybody else's on the street. So we hope you'd like to approve the plan and the variance. Between working with the zoning officer, taking his input, we feel like we've developed a plan that is consistent with zoning regulations in Milford, doesn't go overboard, and yet conforms now on one side, only asking for one variance.
Okay, any questions for this gentleman? Go ahead, Mr. Vazino.
So the stairs are inside the property, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yep, that's great. And they were outside originally, so you've cut down that non... You cut down that nonconformity as well?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Haberman?
And there's two cars underneath, one?
There will be room for two cars underneath if they would like it. Correct.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone in favor? Is there anyone here opposed? Okay. No more questions? Okay, this hearing is closed. Well, I think they situated the house better. It's centered on the lot. So that works, that's good.
It's a little bit long, but they're going to put two cars underneath, and I'm happy about that, and they centered it, so...
I don't think they're increasing the width of the house, and they sought the advice of the zoning enforcement officer. So I think, I don't have a problem with the application.
Okay. We need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Reason for the approval is that there is no encroachment upon the nonconformities, and I'd like to approve based on the survey today provided by Lewis and Associates.
We have motioned to approve, and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Vazino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved.
Item number 4, 83 Overton Avenue, corner surf, Zone R10. Danielle Berkery, Esquire attorney for R.M. Skinner Enterprises Incorporated, owner, vary section 3-1-4-1. Rear yard setback to 11 feet where 20 feet required, 4.1, 4. Side yard projection to 3.5 feet where two feet permitted to build single-family home, map 35, block 440, parcel 27.
Good evening, folks. My name is Attorney Danielle Berkery. I work at the law firm of Harlow Adams &amp; Friedman here in Milford at 1 New Haven Avenue. And I'm here tonight on behalf of R.M. Skinner Enterprises Incorporated. I also have here with me the President of the entity, Roland Skinner. And we are here asking for variance for the property located at 83 Overton Avenue. I'm just going to hand to Ms. Green the affidavit and certificate of mailings for the variance. Again, the property is 83 Overton Avenue. This property is located in the R10 zone. It's actually a little interesting. It's essentially surrounded by the R7.5 zone. It's one of a couple of properties that's located, that's zoned R10. We actually considered a zone change, but did not want to drag our next-door neighbors sort of into an unwilling zoning application. So instead, we're just here asking for a few variances in order to reconstruct the home that's currently located there. That house is in an extreme state of disrepair, structurally unsound, and unfortunately needs to come down. As you can see from the survey, we are located on a corner lot, so we do have the two required front yards, as you folks know. The new home will actually reduce the existing nonconformities, and we will have two conforming 25-foot front yards as required under this zone. We also will have a conforming side yard, which will be 10 and 1/2 feet. But one of the variances we are asking for is to allow the porch off the side to encroach 3 and 1/2 feet instead of the two feet or the 20 percent that's allowed. And then the other variance that we're asking for is for the rear yard. We are asking for 25 feet where 11 feet is required. And so in addition to reducing those existing nonconformities, I think the most significant improvement for this property is that the new home will be completely moved out of the flood zone. And so that's an additional justification for the variance. It's a pretty straightforward application. I'm not sure if you folks have any questions for us, but we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? No? Okay. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? We're all set, were there questions? Okay, this hearing is closed. Well, it looks like all improvements to this property, that's for sure. So nothing really out of the ordinary.
They reduce the nonconformities in the front yards, so I think it's fine.
We need a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Approval is based on the hardship of the corner lot. And, who was the, oh, and based on the survey by Cottis, Badi, and Associates.
We have motioned to approve, and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Vazino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It passes.
Okay. Those are the items on our agenda, so we're into old business. Mr. Haberman, old business, item number 3.
Item number 3. 35 Thompson Street, Zone R5. Thomas Lynch, attorney for Gail Murray, owner. Vary section 3-1-4-1, front yard to 3.3 feet where 10 feet required. Rear yard dwelling to four feet where 20 feet required. 4.1, 4, front yard eve. Projection to 3.3 feet where eight feet permitted. Third-story deck projection to 3.7 feet where 15 permitted, 16 feet permitted. Rear yard hatchway projection to 2.1 feet where 16 feet permitted. Window well. Projection to 1.8 feet where 16 feet permitted. 4.1, 4, paved patio to two feet where four feet required to build a single-family home, map 35, block 444, parcel 25.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trembickie, and Boynton. And my office is located here in Milford at 63 Cherry Street. And I'm here tonight representing Gail Murray. Gail is here with her husband Basil. We're before you tonight on a, basically a reapplication for variances for them to construct a new residence at the property located at 35 Thompson Street here in Milford. And, you know, there's a lot of background. Some of the board members were on the board, of course, in 2012 when this was first presented to you. There's been changes to the plans. There's also a court decision that brought us back here after this board approved the variances that Ms. Murray sought originally in July of 2012. So there's a lot to digest, and I'm going to try to be as brief as I can. But, you know, there is a history, so to speak, to this property. I also have with me tonight Peter Crabtree, my good friend, who is the former Assistant City Planner of the City of Milford. Peter is now a zoning consultant with his office in New Haven, and he's worked with the Murries over the past year and a half with the actual building plans. He's going to go through one of the handouts that I gave you, which is an actual rendering of the revised elevations in the floor plans for this house. So, you know, just, again, to get into the background, Gail came before you back in July of 2012. There were variances basically to build a similar structure that's being presented to you tonight. The structure has been reduced somewhat in size, but it's basically the same layout. Their present residence at 35 Thompson Street was constructed back in 1930, right around the time that our zoning regulations were enacted. It's a completely nonconforming structure. The lot is nonconforming. It's undersized in the R5 zone. It's a one-story, 700-square-foot house that they've been living in over the past number of years that has fallen into a state of disrepair. The foundation is crumbling, and they want to build a new house. And they have spent literally the last two and a half years trying to build a new house. They have had nothing but opposition from their adjacent property owner, Ms. Simko, who is here tonight with her attorney, who's going to, I'm sure, get up and dispute everything that I'm going to tell you. But that's the way of the world, and it's rather unfortunate. All that my clients want to do is build a reasonably-sized house with a footprint that is basically the same footprint that is in existence right now with their one-story residence. So she came before you in July of 2012 with a series of similar variances... So she came before you in July of two thousand and twelve with a series of similar variances. This board granted those variances. Ms. Simcoe then retained the offices of Willinger and Willinger in Bridgeport to bring an appeal to the Superior Court. I've handed out to you a copy of Judge Sequino's decision in that appeal, and I've highlighted a couple of lines that I just wanted to touch base on. I don't want to get into legalities. I don't want to get overly specific in terms of what courts look at on zoning appeals, but it's really, really important to note right at the outset, and I've highlighted, I think, on page three of the decision, that the court specifically found that a hardship existed here, and clearly it exists. It's a narrow lot. It's a small lot. To tear down that house and rebuild it would require variances. Of course, under our new regulation, if you had a storm or a calamity, you wouldn't need to do that. But basically, to tear down, do more than a fifty percent renovation of your house, you need to get variances from this board to be able to rebuild the structure that you had. What the Murrays want to do is build a three-story house. They want to build a reasonably-sized house. And I've had discussions with Attorney Lord, who is here tonight, and I've had discussions with her partner, Attorney Willinger, and it seems as though they really don't have an opposition to a house being built there. It's the height of the house, but we're not seeking any variances for the height of the house. The house is thirty feet. The original, excuse me, the height of this house is now twenty-eight feet. The variances that you granted for the house in two thousand and twelve had a structure that was thirty feet in height. The revised plans before you tonight lower it, okay, by two feet, but still, they've lowered the size of the house. They've eliminated the garage that the original plan had, okay? They've actually centered the structure now in the middle of the lot, so there's only one, there's no side yard variance that was presented in two thousand and twelve that's before you tonight. We've actually reduced the number of variances that we're seeking here. But referencing back to Judge Sequino's decision that I gave to you, the court specifically found that a hardship existed. But what the court did at the end of the decision, I wasn't involved in this case, and I have to be honest with you, I wish I was because I would have seen fit to see if the Murrays wanted to take it to the next level and appeal it to the State Appellate Court. But if you read the last page of Judge Sequino's decision, she chides the Murrays, the defendants in this case, because she's saying that under our zoning regulations, you can't expand a nonconforming structure. She makes a specific reference to section six-point-three-point-four, which says that you can't expand nonconforming structures. What I handed out to you in the third item is a copy of the page before that she didn't, she meaning Judge Sequino, didn't realize existed in our regulations, or she wouldn't have written the decision the way she did, because we have a specific regulation that says you can expand a nonconforming structure. You can expand a nonconforming use as long as you apply for a variance. And that's what Ms. Murray did in two thousand and twelve, and that's what she's doing here tonight. She's applying for a variance. She wants to expand a nonconforming structure slightly. If you look at the footprint, the existing building has a footprint of seven hundred and sixty square feet. What are we looking for? A footprint of some eight hundred square feet. It's de minimis. These people rightfully should be living in a house two years after they first came before you, rather than spending the last two years in court and now spending the last six months retaining the services of a surveyor and going through all of this again, okay, to be able to build a reasonably-sized house. So I'm asking you to do what you did in two thousand and twelve, and if Ms. Simcoe sees fit to appeal your decision, then another court is going to look at this, and there'll be other arguments that'll be made to another court. I hope it doesn't get to that. I'm not goading anybody into doing that. But what I am saying to you is that my clients have a clear hardship. It was even enunciated in the court decision, which I've never, in thirty-five years of practicing law, I've never seen a judge on an appeal of a decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals find that there was a hardship, but then kick it back to you folks and say, "Well, you were in error in granting the variance because, under the regulations, you can't expand a nonconforming structure." Well, unfortunately, it wasn't pointed out to her that the page before, the page that she was citing, has a specific clause that says that you can, as long as you apply for a variance under nine-point-two-point-two. So that's it in a nutshell, in terms of, you know, the background, how we got here today. The plans speak for themselves. The existing site on the survey that was submitted to you shows the house, the proposed structure on page two. Again, we have the elevations that I've handed out to you. Peter's going to go through the specifics of the building and the floor plan and whatnot, but basically, it's the same structure, actually slightly smaller than what you approved in two thousand and twelve. All right? So I'd ask that you find, again, that there's a hardship, and you grant my client the variances to be able to build this house. I'm going to turn things over to Peter, unless you have specific questions you want to raise.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch?
Could you bring the plan closer to me, Attorney Lynch? Would you mind?
The proposed house?
Yeah. I can't show.
Yep. To see the existing one?
Yeah, to see the existing one. Thank you. Yes, I thought, right? I mean, you're just, what you're adding from the seven hundred and sixty to eight hundred is just squaring it off, right?
Squaring it off, exactly.
Okay. Thanks.
And going up two stories.
Right.
Which is permitted. We're not seeking any variances for that.
Yep. Okay. Thank you for walking it up.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? No? Okay. Mr. Crabtree?
I live at sixty-four Stanley Street, New Haven, Connecticut, and I'm here on behalf of Gail and Mr. Young, Gail Murray. I just want to expand on a couple of comments that Attorney Lynch made. If this lot were being created today, it's a rear lot, you'd have to have a twenty-five-foot right-of-way. We only have ten. Also, you would have to have an acre of land. We only have about eighteen hundred and seventy-five square feet. That's verified on the surveyor. One other improvement that's going to get made here is currently, water line to this house goes across Simcoe's property, and there's no easement for it, and so if this variance is granted, we will, of course, relocate that water line along the ten-foot easement going into this property, and the overhead electric lines will be eliminated because, under the regulations, when you have a rear lot, you have to bury that. And the other thing I want to point out about the new side yards of ten and five, if they needed to get a maintenance vehicle in the backyard to service the air conditioning unit or something, that's an advantage, but there aren't going to be any, there aren't going to be any real problems with the setbacks for the neighbors. And I want to expound a little bit about that because most of the variances that we're asking for are in the rear yard. The rear yard, we have an air conditioning unit. The rear yard, we have a Bilco hatchway door, and we have a patio there, and then there's an area way for a window. These are all in the backyard, which can't be seen by anybody, and, you know, and there is a third-story deck that's going out three feet, but that can't be seen by anybody that lives on the main street up here. I have an earlier map from the inland wetlands that shows where the nearest houses are, and they're over two hundred feet away across the way. So even during the winter months, the neighbors that are, that would be on East Broadway, they can't even see this place during the wintertime. So in the summertime, when they're out there for barbecue, there's nothing to see. The only thing that the neighbors are going to see is the increased height in the front. It's going to be twenty-eight feet, and so, in my opinion, what's not to like? As far as the home goes, you do have the plans in front of you. It's a four-bedroom house. It's three stories, and one of the things that I wanted to point out in the plan was if you look at the front entrance, we've eliminated that pad that was there in the front originally, and so that's one more variance that we knocked out. And all the variances, except for anything we asked, in the rear, where things are completely harmless, nobody can see it, and it's not going up three stories, we think is a reasonable request. And one last thing to say, with an eighteen hundred and seventy-five-foot lot, we've, even if we could meet all the setbacks by some miracle, we'd have to come before the commission because we can't meet the minimum floor area. So I think that's enough said, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Crabtree? None? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Go ahead, Mr. Lynch.
I just had two other points that I wanted to make, just to follow up on what Peter said. You know, one of the logics behind having front and rear yard setbacks is to create space, and I just wanted noted for the record that, as it relates to the front yard setback, there's some forty-five-feet distance between the proposed structure and Ms. Simcoe's residence. Those are the two variances, really, that we're looking for, is the front yard and the rear yard. The rear yard setback, if you look at the legend, it's all marshland back there. It's the property that's owned by the Mariners Walk condominium, so this is all open space back here. So, again, one of the logical reasons of having setbacks is to create buffer, to create space. There's an enormous amount of spacing between this residence and anything in close proximity to it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Okay, anyone here opposed?
Diane Lord of Willinger, Willinger, and Bucy. As counsel indicated, we are opposed. I'm representing Ms. Simcoe.
Can you just move that mic just one little closer to you? Somehow, we're not picking it up. Please.
Representing Ms. Simcoe? Okay. And as counsel indicated, this case does have a rather tortured history, one that has been very costly to my client. The original application came in in May of two thousand and twelve to build this three-story house, increasing the footprint and increasing other nonconformities. At that time, you denied it without prejudice. They came back in July two thousand and twelve for the three-story house, again, with the increase in the footprint and increasing other nonconformities. I was here in opposition. You approved it. Ms. Simcoe appealed your approval, and that decision remains. It was not appealed from there, so that decision really is the law of the case. I believe counsel just gave you a copy of the case, and I'd kind of like to review that. The court found that Ms. Murray owned a pre-existing nonconforming structure. It then found that the increase in the height footprint setback increased the nonconformities and that there was no hardship that would allow these additions. And I respectfully disagree with what Mr. Attorney Lynch indicated. If you look on page five of the decision at the top, the court states, and I'll quote it, "The hardship of the Detering Foundation may justify replacing the existing structure, but there is no hardship which would allow Murray to obtain the variances needed to construct a proposed three-story home on this undersized, nonconforming lot." And the court then refers to the case of Curran versus Zoning Appeals, Board of Appeals, this is a Milford case. This is a case that the property was, piece property in Laurel Beach, as is here, it was a legal, pre-existing, nonconforming house. Again, same as here, the owner wanted to demolish it and rebuild the house, reducing setbacks and increasing coverage. The owner wanted to square off the footprint, as Murray is requesting. The appellate court stated, and this is the appellate court, appellate court, not just the Superior Court, as in this case, that the ZBA abused its discretion when it granted variances to increase the size of a nonconforming house because there was no hardship. A personal hardship for the larger space, no matter how compelling, is insufficient, and the house could be built in keeping with the regulations, replace not enlarge. The court, Judge Sequino, also noted that exact same thing on page, sorry, on page three and four, where Attorney Lynch indicated that the court found a hardship. It does state that the board was correct in finding that the size of the lot were sufficient hardships to grant the variances to replace the structure. And it goes on to say that, you know, Murray, the plaintiff, Ms. Simcoe, we agree that she could rebuild her home on the existing footprint, the same size that it is now. The decision, Judge Sequino's decision also cited a case called Monroe versus ZBA, another appellate court case, and that was regarding property in Branford that contained a legal, pre-existing, nonconforming garage. The owner wanted to add a second story to the garage, no increase in the footprint. Branford's regulations were, like Milford's, prohibit an enlargement of a nonconforming structure. That court found that the addition of a second story is an increase in the nonconformity. In this case, the increase of two stories would also have to be an increase in the nonconformity. Specifically, the court found that the bulk of the building increases the amount of the closed space, causing a substantial increase in the nonconformity. And in this appellate court case, that was a mere four hundred square-foot second story on a garage. So I believe it's very clear, that is Blackletter Lawn, Connecticut, that when you're dealing with a nonconforming structure, adding height, infringing on setbacks, enlarging the footprint, or any enlargements that make a structure less conforming is not permissible, and you have several of those here that are making it less conforming than it already is. The footprint is increased, the back setbacks are smaller than they exist, and, again, it's not permissible under your regulations at six-point-three-point-two. And as was stated in the decision by Judge Sequino, the court found that you abused your discretion by violating six-point-three-point-two. In addition, this structure is, it's mammoth, and it's out of character with the neighborhood, which is by and large one- and two-story homes. It's very intrusive to my client, whose house is right in front of that. And quite frankly, I believe it's an outrage that she has had to come back here and incur fees, appear in opposition to this application, when Murray is fully aware that this application flies in the face of Judge Sequino's decision of August fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. And I believe Ms. Simcoe would like to say a few words. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Simcoe, and I've owned my house at thirty-three Thompson Street for the last fourteen years, and I am opposed to this application. I just want to, can I bring some pictures up?
You can bring them forward.
Murray's house there, Murray's house there, and that's my deck in my backyard.
Okay, thank you.
My property is directly in front of thirty-five Thompson Street. If Gail is allowed to build the proposed structure, my property value will be greatly diminished by, for a number of reasons. Thompson Street is a quiet street with mostly smaller, single-family homes, and many of us have to park on the street. My house has a small front yard, and I use my fenced rear yard for grilling, gardening, and entertaining. This house overlooking my backyard will eliminate any outdoor privacy I currently have. This overbearing four-point-four feet, this overbearing structure will be four-point-four feet from my property. This overbearing 4.4 feet, this overbearing structure will be 4.4 feet from my property. It will block all the sunlight, no gardening, no grass. I mean, this is a mammoth structure. As soon as you walk out the back door, it's there. In 2012, this board approved variances for a substantially similar plan to expand the structure on this very small plot of land. That decision was appealed, and the judge found that the board was abused, had abused its discretion in granting this application in violation of its own laws. And the decision of the board was overturned. As I am sure you are aware, that zoning reg 9.2.2 says any variance approved must be the minimum required for the reasonable use of the land or building. Gail certainly isn't asking for the minimum in this application. Since there is no variance required to rebuild this house with its current dimensions, there should be no approval of any of the variances, any of the variance requests in this application. For Gail to come before you tonight with plans for virtually the same-sized structure with the same footprint that was overturned is making a travesty of this board and this entire process. She's basically asking the board to make these same approvals that the judge found to be an abuse of the board's discretion. Based on the Milford zoning laws and the ruling of the judge in this appeal, the board has no choice but to deny any and all variance requests for this nonconforming structure to be expanded. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Edward Nelson. I live at 289 Burnt Plains Road. And until about 15 months ago, I resided at 33 Thompson Street. I'm a licensed realtor, and I recently pulled some comps to give Lynn an idea of what her property at 33 Thompson Street is worth. As it sits right now, fair market value is about $215,000. If the proposed plans and variances are approved, the market value of 33 Thompson Street would drop considerably. I think it's safe to assume that a 28-foot structure overlooking Lynn's backyard, 4.4 feet from her property line, would make her property very difficult to sell. She would probably have a hard time getting $165,000 for it. That's a $50,000 difference. There would also be a negative impact to the values of 29 and 39 Thompson Street, which are right next to Lynn's house but in front of the proposed house. I would estimate probably a reduction in $20,000 to $30,000 for each of those pieces of property. Section 8-6 of the Connecticut General Statutes explains powers and duties of the Board of Appeals. It says to determine and vary the application of the zoning bylaws, ordinances, or regulations in harmony with their general purpose and intent with due consideration for conserving the public health, safety, convenience, welfare, and property values. This proposed house will destroy property values. When the original application was approved in July of 2012, there were comments from the board that didn't seem relevant to the application. I feel there's a need to dispel some of the assumptions the board made during that hearing. One of the board members said they are just trying to make a go of it. And they also said they're not in it for financial gain. I don't understand why these comments were made and what they had to do with the variance. But Gail has filed two adverse possession suits against two different neighbors in the last 13 years to try to steal land from them. These actions have cost the neighbors tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees to defend land that was rightfully theirs. At the time of the hearing in 2012, Gail's property taxes were delinquent for a number of years. She only paid them when foreclosure proceedings began on the property. Gail doesn't even live there. Don't think for one second that they are not in this for the money. Our laws say that a nonconforming structure can be rebuilt to its original specifications, and no variances are needed at all. So there really is no hardship here. Our laws also say that nonconforming structures cannot be expanded to increase nonconformities. Please deny this application. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in opposition?
Hello, everybody? My name is Renee Head, and I own and reside the home at 24 Thompson Street. I am opposed to this plan due to the fact that setbacks, the rear setback, is so close to the woods and the stream behind the property. Building will upset the ecosystem and the microenvironment for the animals that depend on it. The proposed plan is overkill for a small lot. It's way too close to bordering homeowners and for the safety of Ms. Murray and her own family in the event of a fire. There is minimal quick access to the property for emergency vehicles. Thompson Street is not the waterfront. Is there really a need for a three-story home with no hope of seeing any water at all? The proposed plan is the result of the overbuilding of small residential beach lots. And with all due respect to the board, it just continues to happen and happen time and time again. I don't know Ms. Murray at all, and I just met the Simkkos a short time ago. Ms. Murray does deserve a new home. I grew up in the home I live in now. I'm very fortunate. And even as a child, the home needed repair. It hasn't changed at all. It's her right and her obligation to maintain the property. I'm just asking that she pull it back, reevaluate, and bring to the board a reasonable proposal. If the board approves this proposed new home, it will set a foundation for others to do the same, on the street and in the neighborhood. What others have done doesn't make it right for Thompson Street. The home I live in now, I can see my neighbor standing in his kitchen, and he can see me. I don't have a variance. The homes are very, very tight. So, you know, I'm just asking for Ms. Murray and her attorney and her husband and family and the board to find a common ground, and let's make this work. So I am opposed to what's on the table now, but certainly not opposed to any family having a new home. Let's just tighten up the rules and procedures. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed?
Hi, I'm Vigniv Damalsky. My wife and I own the house at 29 Thompson Street.
We need your name, sir. We didn't get your name. We need your name and address, please.
It's Vigniv Damalsky, 30 Sharon Court, Shelton. Okay. My wife and I own the house at 29 Thompson Street. The property is next door to our property, and my opposition to the proposal is that it's too high on a small parcel of land, which imposes on our privacy. Another house was built in the other side, which is too high and does impede our privacy. They are so close, they can look into our bedrooms. We never received anything in the mail that the house on 35 Thompson Street were looking for a variance and proposed a three-story building. If this house gets built, it would be like David living between two Goliaths and bring down our property value. We are in the process of remodeling that house, and I don't know if we'll be able to recoup what we're putting into it. We are looking forward to moving into this house that we have put a lot of work into. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Mr. Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It sounds as though most of the comments in opposition are relative to the height of the building. We're not seeking any variance for the height of the building. The building conforms in all due respects with the height regulations. And as I said at the outset, the structure itself is basically being built on the same-sized footprint as the existing structure. So, you know, this is just a continuance of what's been going on over the last couple of years. The gentleman that came up and spoke relative to real estate values, saying that he was a real estate agent, I dispute that. He offered no comparable data. He offered no evidence for the record showing that the building of a 28-foot, four-bedroom house next to a structure such as Mrs. Simcoe's would devalue her property by 50%. So I dispute that and ask that that not be considered by you at all. And I think that, again, relative to looking at the decision of Judge Secuino that I handed to you, the last page of any judge's decision, the last page is the most important. That's where the judge writes her conclusion. And the judge's conclusion was clear that this was an expansion of a nonconforming structure and that you granted approval to this in derogation or in opposition to your own regulations. Those are the words that she used, that the board acted in violation of its own regulations. And I submit again, as I did in my initial presentation, that, you know, section 6.2.4 allows for variances to be granted to expand nonconforming structures. It's clear, it's in our regulations. She just missed it. Pure and simple. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch?
I just have, just to be clear, the increase in the footprint is purely that square off of that one corner. Am I correct on that?
Right, and there's a window well, and there's also a hatchway and the eve projection, so that...
And even if you didn't have that square off that corner and just used the existing footprint, you would still need a variance in order to rebuild the house. Am I correct on that?
If there's a renovation of the house more than 50%, correct. But nothing relative to the height? I mean, there's all this discussion about the height, but the height is in conformity with your regulations.
Mr. Vasino?
Maybe it was a timing thing, but can you help me understand why this wasn't appealed and brought back to the judge with the 6.2.4?
You have the right, after a judge...
Yep.
This was heard in the Superior Court.
Right.
Judge Secuino sits in the Civil Superior Court up in Derby. After a judge's decision is rendered, you have a 20-day period to appeal that to the state appellate court. I didn't handle this. I can't comment as to why it wasn't appealed. Perhaps it was economic. Maybe the Murrays didn't have the money to spend in legal fees. I don't know.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Herman. Got a question? You're all set?
I guess I just want to reaffirm with Mr. Harris that even if they built on the existing footprint without any request for anything else or any squaring off or the hatchway, they would still need to come to this board because it would be nonconforming. And the bump and the square off create the...
Correct. The local door, I think the air conditioning unit, the eve projections. The board should understand, this is a new house. This is not, they're not expanding the existing house. The existing house is going to be demolished and a new one built.
So can I ask the same question to Mr. Harris? I just want to make sure I got that right. I'm sorry. So if they did everything the same that the house exists with right now, when they rebuild it from scratch, would they have to come to this board to ask to do that? I'm sorry to ask you that again, but just to make sure I understand.
Yes, this house is going to be demolished. If you build anything on this lot, I have a hard time seeing how you can evade a variance.
Yep, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Sota, go ahead.
All right, I wasn't here in 2012, so I just want to make sure I got this straight.
And I wasn't either for this particular application.
So you said the last page is the most important, and in that it says he remands the case, or she remands the case back to zoning board appeals with directions to deny the application.
Yeah, I believe it actually, Attorney Woods, your city trial counsel, met with you in executive session, and the matter was brought back, and I think a formal vote to, like, reverse your approval.
So now you're bringing it back in front of us because you're saying she didn't see this section on the variance?
I'm saying that's one, I'm saying that...
And that's why we're going through this all again?
I'm saying that the judge made an error, correct.
Okay.
And that this is, more than six months has passed, and this is a reapplication for...
But I mean, even though we have a court order here that says to deny the application?
You have a court order to deny the application that was presented in 2012. This is a new application.
New application, okay.
With changes. You can argue that they're not major changes, but there are changes.
Thanks.
Can you review the changes for me again, Attorney Lynch? One of the changes is the squaring off.
The garage, the squaring off, the patio in the back.
The garage is gone now, right?
Yep.
Okay, so that's...
The house is two feet shorter.
Two feet shorter.
The 2012 house was 30 feet, this is 28 feet.
Yep.
And then... Oh, yeah, right, very important. There was a side yard variance in 2012. We've now situated the house on the lot, so only the front yard and the rear yard needed to be varied. We eliminated a side yard variance.
Mr. Sota, you have a question?
Oh, no, sorry, I forgot to show...
Anyone else with questions? We're all set?
Thank you.
Okay, this hearing's closed. Well, keep in mind that we did grant this in 2012, and they are pulling back on the dimensions. As far as property values, that's speculation. I don't know what your thoughts might be.
I believe I voted for it back then, and because in my mind, there was a hardship that anything they built there, even if they build the existing, on the existing footprint, the same house, they'd still need a variance from us, because there still exists a hardship for that. In terms of the height of the house, that's, they're under the 35. That was reasoning back then as well. And they've decreased some of the increases that the structure or the structure currently presents that I would still believe that they have a hardship in that, you know.
Any other comments? Okay. Sarah?
I'm stuck on the height. I mean, the biggest issue we've heard here tonight is that the house is towering above the neighbors, but in fact, that's not even an issue that we're dealing with. So I don't really see a problem.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve based on the hardship of the size of the lot and the condition of the house and the changes that were made since the last time it was presented, and for the other reasons noted in the survey.
We need a second.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second on the motion? Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Herman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
Against the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
I'm with the motion.
I'm with the motion. Passes. Okay, let's see here now. We're all done with old business. Any new business? New business? No? Staff update?
Yes, we have a new alternate member.
Yeah, we do have a new, we do have a new member in Allison. Okay. Acceptance of the minutes from December 9, 2014?
I read them, Mr. Chairman. They're fine.
Thank you. Okay, applications for next month? Just the one that we tabled? Okay, other than that... Yes? Go ahead, new business. Okay, we'll go back to that.
Hey, Mr. Harris, I just want to ask a question. When these people apply for the variances, is there anything that says they have to give us elevation drawings? Because some, like, 50% of them have elevations and 50% don't, and they're really helpful. I mean, they need them to get a permit, so why couldn't they give them to us? I mean...
We'll make sure they do.
What's that?
We'll make sure they do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Meg Green has something to let us...
Thank you. I gave several handouts to everybody. I singled out Allison for special treatment. I think all of you have copies of the ZBA materials that Stephen located last year. They're very helpful. But I want to just note for you, I provided everybody with hard copy of the schedule... copy of the schedule for the year. It's always the second Tuesday, but there's also the deadline information on the calendar. There's the private contact information. That is not shared with the public, so your home addresses are, but none of the phone numbers, emails, any of that stuff. Stephen and I also have our private cell phones and emails provided there, so everybody, you know, they're basically for use in emergency situations. You have a flat tire, you're not going to get here, things like that. Final thing I wanted to draw everybody's attention to is the land use workshop on Saturday, March 21. The city will pay the tuition fees. If you would let me know if you're interested in attending that session as soon as possible. I have to process paperwork. They are excellent sessions. I personally attended, as have many people on this board. The final thing I just want to throw out there is Sarah came down to the office around, I think Thanksgiving, Christmas time, and visited. Robert did as well. I just, you know, it may not have occurred to other people to do that, but anytime you folks want to stop in and see the belly of the beast, please be our guest. And you can see how permits are processed, what the filing system looks like, building inspection and so on. So I just wanted to, you know, let you know there are resources for you to consult, and welcome to the new members and...
I would like to plug the Land Use Academy on March 21. That is the single best block of information you can get on planning and zoning in Connecticut.
Is this pretty much what most of it...
It's only held every other year, and it's well worth it.
Is this pretty much what the rest of us have already gone through?
No, this is different.
It's a little bit different.
This is different. This is high-powered land use attorneys who have a hell of a lot of experience, and it's very interesting and very informative.
Thank you.
Stephen, I went to one in East Tatum two years ago, and it was all land use attorneys. Is that the same one?
No, it's sort of based on the same theme. But the one, the one at Wesleyan, which is every other year, is the mother of all seminars.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We need a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn. Okay? All in favor, aye? This meeting is adjourned.